Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the prayer. Today, as we open this session, we pray for your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process. We pray for your direction, which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions for which will be good for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance?
United States of America.
United States of America.
Two republics, which we stand.
For which we stand.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Invisible.
Liberty.
With liberty and justice for all.
Somebody's saying that? Roll call?
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Sam Harris. Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
A present.
Mayor's business, communication, remote Zoom participation.
Moment of silence.
Oh, yeah. Joe, do the moment of silence first. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docan Chamber for Paul Belanger, an outstanding citizen, family man, dedicated baseball coach, and community activist. He was married to his princess Elaine Belanger, with whom he celebrated their 60th wedding anniversary this past September 16th. Paul graduated from St. Joseph's High School with the class of 1958 and attended the University of Massachusetts Lowell for Business in the '70s. Paul proudly served with the United States Navy. He retired from Ludsted and Rondo Building Company, where he worked for several years as a carpenter. Paul loved to build things, and that is why he is known for his crooked fingers for many years of working in construction. Paul's talent was never so prevalent and prominent as they were when behind the scenes Paul crafted many a stage set as a background for the Highland players. His talent was remarkable and added to the magical atmosphere of each Highland player production. Paul loved building birdhouses and even helped build the house he and his wife resided in, the same house where they raised all four of their children. Paul was a Red Sox fan. He coached baseball for his sons through the Lowell Little League. Besides his wife, he is survived by his daughters, Paula and Lisa, a son, Mark Belanger, and eight grandchildren. He also leaves behind nine great-grandchildren. He is also predeceased by his oldest son, Michael Belanger, whom he worked with for many years, who passed away this past March. We offer our condolences to his family relatives and many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docan Chamber for Shirley A. Cairn, a lifelong resident of Lowell, beloved mother and grandmother. She was the beloved wife of the late Raymond P. Cairn. Shirley took tremendous pride in her work and was employed by Sanders Associates where she worked for many years, leading up to her retirement. Even in retirement, Shirley remained active and worked part-time as a receptionist with the Lowell Senior Center. She was a longtime communicant of St. Michael's Parish in Lowell. Shirley was a proud life member of both the Eastern Club Ladies Auxiliary and the Lowell VFW Walker Rogers Post 662 Ladies Auxiliary. To her family, Shirley was the light of their lives. The love and support she always provided was constant and a comfort to all of them. Her passing has left a tremendous void in their hearts and lives, and mine as well. Shirley is survived by her beloved, loving daughter, Carol Plant, her four beloved grandchildren, Eric, Heather, Caitlin, and Abigail, her four great-grandchildren. She was the mother-in-law of the late Barry Plant. We offer our sympathy to her family relatives and many friends. God rest her soul. And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docan Chamber to all those that passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docan Chambers for Susan E. Dayon Papa Constantino. Susan, 71, a lifelong resident of Lowell, passed away on Friday, November 12th at High Point House in Haverhill, Mass. after a long illness. She was born in Lowell on October 5th, 1950, a daughter of the late Brendan Dayon and the late Dorothy Riley Randall. She was raised in South Lowell and worked in weighing laboratories for over 25 years and later at Hanscom Air Force Base around 10 years before her retirement in 2016. Susan cherished many things in her life, especially her grandchildren, who affectionately referred to her as Nana. When not spending time with those closest to her, she could be found on the beaches of Seabrook, New Hampshire with a good book in hand and Boba Streisand on the radio. Susan was a voracious reader and enjoyed, especially enjoyed reading about the British royal family. Susan had infectious laugh and loved to be the life of the party and brought great joy to all those who had the pleasure of meeting her. She is survived by her two children, Melissa Gannon and her husband Cliff of Lowell, and Lieutenant Charlie Papa Constantino of Lowell, a police officer with the Lowell Police Department, her four grand children, Alexa Gannon, Nicholas Gannon, Samantha Gannon, and Bobby Pappas, all of Lowell, her two sisters, Judith A. Gallagher and her husband Michael of Lowell, Patricia A. Dayon of Surprise, Arizona, her nephew and godson Liam Gallagher, also of Lowell, and two nieces, Katie Rhine of Surprise, Arizona, and Kirsten Mellinger and her husband Mark of Flagstaff, Arizona, plus several great nieces and nephews. In addition to her beloved parents, she was also predeceased by her former husband Stephen "Bobby" Papa Constantino, who passed away in 2007. Susan's family would like to extend their heartfelt gratitude to the Marimack Valley Hospice for their care of Susan during her final weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other moments of silence? We could have Docan Chambers. Thank you. So before we get started first, too, I'd also like to welcome the newly-elected city councils that are here for the meeting to observe. Mr. Raffiem, Wayne Jennings, Eric Gitcher, and Corey Robinson. Did I miss anybody? That's it, right? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mayor's business, communication, remote Zoom participation need a motion to place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Chow. Under Mayor's business, also, I have some citations. I think we'll go just a little bit out of order just because of the children here, so just to make it easier. So first, I wanted to have, glasses keep bugging up. So I wanted to have Kevin and Debbie Fernandez come down, and I just wanted to say thank you. We have a citation for you for all the work that you do in the city of Lowell, owners of Mario's Furniture on Gorham Street. Your citation's on the way down, sorry. But we want to say thank you, especially for the work that you did at 1120 Gorham Street, the old Luz Building, which was dilapidated for years and years. And you took that building, and it looks beautiful now. You're almost done with it.
Yep.
But it's looking beautiful, and you have over 11 properties that you've taken care of throughout the city and another nine that you own and maintain. And so I just want to make sure that we said thank you as a city and appreciate all the work that you do and the effort that you put into being a resident here.
Thank you.
So wanted to thank you for coming down and appreciate you. Thank you. I don't know if you want to say a couple of words. I'll put you on the spot, but.
That's okay. Counselors, City Manager, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, it's a challenge over there at the old Luz Building. We should be done in the spring. Just a lot of delays because of COVID. Can't get any material, but we'll get there. So we made the outside look presentable, so whoever drives by, it looks good.
Yeah.
But the interior will be finished in the spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll swing by with your citation. We have a little misprinting problems in there. All right. Next up, we have Jessica Lander, if you want to come up to the podium. Jessica's one of our great teachers that we have at the high school. She was an honorary recipient of the Social Impact 2021 EDI Award, and she was also one of the 50 finalists this year for the Barclay Foundation. They nominate over 8,000 students, 8,000 teachers out of 121 student countries. And I just wanted you to come up, say a few words, introduce yourself, and tell us what you do. The work that you do at the high school is incredible. You inspire so many students there, and, you know, as you said in your quote, that this is your life and you love to inspire your students. So thank you, and tell us about yourself.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, members of the city council and City Manager. It's an honor to speak with you this evening. As the mayor said, my name is Jessica Lander, and I am a history and civics teacher of recent immigrants and refugees at Lowell High School. I'm joined here tonight with two of my incredible former students, Philly Marte and Carla Duran, who, for the past two and a half years, have also been my collaborators and co-founders of the National We Are America Project. I wanted to tell you just a little bit about this project, and we shared with you copies of our most recent book at your desks. The project came out of a class I teach at Lowell High School, the Seminar on American Diversity, a class that I co-created with a then-senior at the time in 2016. And in this class, we grapple with hard and important history through the lens of national movements and change-makers, and also our own personal histories and family histories. In 2018, my students together set about exploring their histories, and each student shared a personal story of self that helped us better understand what it meant to be American. And we printed this collected anthology in a book we titled "We Are America." In the spring, their classmates in the spring semester published its sequel, and that year they were speaking at universities and at public gatherings and starting to have a conversation from these stories. And I wanted to invite up two of my students to talk a little bit more. I wanted to first invite up Philly Marte to talk a little bit about that class, and then I'll tell you what came out of that class.
Being in that class was definitely a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and I'm very grateful I was able to attend. During that class, I was able to find my voice and help others find theirs. So it's definitely helped me in my life, and I believe it's going to help me continue in my goals.
So what happened next is something that's truly incredible for me as a teacher. As the year came to a close in 2018, 2019, Philly and Carla and some of their classmates came to me wanting to continue this work. It was no longer for grade, it was no longer for a class credit, but they thought the work was important. And so right near the end of school, we mapped out what it would take to create a national project based on this curriculum and based on this book. And then we set about creating it that summer. We created an application. I set about rewriting the curriculum that I had taught, and we sent it out to teachers across the country, and teachers enthusiastically started applying. For the last three years now, my former students and I, now co-founders of the National We Are America Project, have been mentoring and collaborating more than 50 teachers in more than 25 states across the country. They in turn have been working with more than 1,500 students to tell their own American stories, shared in collections that they write and publish in their communities, and also shared on our website. These stories are supposed to invoke conversation led by the next generation, our amazing young people. And I wanted to invite another former student, the incredible Carla Duran, to talk about the experience of mentoring teachers as a young person herself mentoring teachers across the country.
Well, this is my favorite part of the project, and it's mentoring teachers. And why is this my favorite part? Because now it's not the teacher teaching the student, but the student teaching the teacher, even though that sounds funny. But it's, the change that we have created has been amazing, looking at teachers from Florida, Hawaii, Chicago. I don't even know how many states we teach right now, because it has been, as we sometimes say, it has been three years. But the change that we have created in the classroom, creating confidence between the student and the teacher, and that relationship that once maybe was lost, now we have restored it. And seeing all the stories and all the voices that we have shared around the U.S. and also in our website, it has been amazing, and we would love to keep doing this work for one more year, and we keep going strong. So thank you.
And so this November, as the mayor said, we were honored to receive a 2021 Social Impact Award from the Massachusetts Innovation Network. And this year, the work continues, as Carla said. We are continuing to collaborate with teachers and students across the country to publish their We Are America stories. We hope you'll check out our website, which has a growing collection now of stories, and we'll have more as the year continues. And I'm teaching it right now with my students at Lowell High. And I wanted to also make sure that you knew as well that this work could not be done without the incredible, amazing support and collaboration of so many people in Lowell. And I want to specifically thank Superintendent Joel Boyd and the Lowell School Committee, our head of school, Mike Fiatto, and the Lowell School, Lowell High School Leadership Team, my house dean, Deidre Haley, my incredible heads of department, Rob Delosa and Steven Gervais, and then all of my high school colleagues at Lowell High, and then, of course, also our families of our amazing students who support them every day. We are excited that we can share this work with you that started in Lowell, started right across the street, and is now working in classrooms across the country. And so we hope you enjoy copies of our most recent edition on your desk. We're happy to answer any questions or invite you into our classroom, but thank you so much for letting us share a little bit about our work.
Thank you, Jessica, for your leadership and acknowledging all the people that you work with. It does take a team, and, you know, a lot happens in Lowell, so that's why we have people like you here. So on behalf of myself and the entire city council, we have a citation for you, so. And next, we have, like to honor Rowley's Farm. So we have a couple of registered speakers, but again, we just want to thank you for preserving the land and everything that you've done over the years for the people of Lowell. So we have a couple of registered speakers. We'll have them go first, and then, I'm sorry, Counselor Elliott, you go first.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I filed a motion a couple of weeks ago to recognize and honor Rowley Perrin and his family. Rowley's Farm is in part of the heritage of Pawtucketville and actually the entire city of Lowell for so many decades. Rowley Perrin has spent nearly his whole life walking and working the land his parents bought almost seven years, 70 years ago. Tonight, we recognize and honor a man and his family, not only for preserving the property in perpetuity, but also for the years of struggle that they endured in the early years to make ends meet and keep it as a farmland. Back in the '70s, like many other communities, the city was taxing the property at a residential rate, its tax bills were $7,000, $8,000, $9,000, up to $11,000 at one point in $1973. The legislature finally passed the Horticultural Land Act to allow property to be assessed as farmland. The point, you know, and it wasn't until almost four years later that Mr. Perrin had to sue the city in order to have that designation, but they pursued. They paid all the bills because they wanted to preserve it as farmland. To do so, Rowley, his mother, and his father, they all worked second jobs and worked the farm during the day. At the outset, they planted strawberries and pansies, then corn, tomatoes, cucumbers, and then the trees. Little-known fact, when Rowley was a boy, one summer, he worked all summer. His father told him to work all summer, harvest as many strawberries, and you can buy that drum set that he wanted to. He did, and little-known information, Rowley is an accomplished jazz drummer. He's a farmer in the day, and he's a musician at night. So, but each year in the neighborhood, you'd see these signs, last year of corns, tomatoes. It'd send ripples through the neighborhood and his loyal customers base, and he would hear from them, and next year, we'd see the stand open. You know, one of his workers, and by the way, I'll give a little plug, there's actually a movie that was made about the last farm in Lowell. It's on Amazon Prime. You can rent it or buy it. But one of his, one of his workers on that movie says it best, you know, getting Rowley's corn and tomatoes, it's just a thing. You just, until you get the corn and tomatoes, it's just not summer yet. So Rowley, we want to thank you for your service to our country and the U.S. Army and Korea. We'd like to thank you for enduring the hardships to keep the farm from being developed into housing after hundreds of offers from developers, and your decision to sell to the Autobahn Parks and Conservation Trust and Mill City Grows. The legacy of Rowley's Farm in Pawtucketville that we all come to know and love and experience in both summer and the winter will remain alive. You and your family have made an integral part of Lowell's history, and thousands have made memories at your farm and family traditions each Christmas year. Rowley says it best in his film, as I've learned, that was done in 2010. He made a name for himself. He took a lot of pride in his farming techniques, and people liked the trees, too. They liked the fresh-cut trees. And finally, his mother closed the film so eloquently when she said, "The mission of Rowley's Farms, we were there to make mon, we were not there to make money. We were here to make people happy." How great is that? Thank you very much for everything you have done, Rowley, and your family.
Thank you.
David Maloney?
Hi. For the past decade, Rowley Perrin's farm has been the subject of rumors. Lowellians speculate if each year is the last year for his famous corn, his fat tomatoes, his perfect Christmas trees. People always seem to have an insider's info, but for Rowley, he has no idea what anyone is talking about. They are just rumors, and Rowley doesn't have time to entertain them. He has a farm to run. I believe the rumors and talk of Rowley and the farmer because people are worried they'll lose that constant in their lives. The corn in midsummer, the trees after Thanksgiving. Each year, those things can be counted on, as if the corn picks itself, the trees trim themselves. But the man behind the operation, Rowley, is the real constant. Farm work is hard work. I learned that when I started working for Rowley 22 years ago. I came from a house without tools, lucky to find a hammer or screwdriver. Sorry, Mom. Rowley taught me how to work the farm, the tools I couldn't name. At times, it is grueling work, hardly worth the money, but each year, I come back to work for him. That is a testament to Rowley. He demands commitment and trust. I learned to respect those traits in people, too. Thank you, Mayor Leahy and Councilman Elliott, for awarding Rowley with this honor. His lifetime of hard work deserves it.
Thank you.
John, John Woodding?
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me a chance to thank Rowley Perrin. I'm John Woodding. I'm the president of Mill City Grows, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to add my thanks to those who have spoken before. For Rowley Perrin, provers, helping us preserve this great asset, this great land, working together with Mill City Grows and the Audubon Society. I would also like to quickly thank the staff at Mill City Grows, and particularly our wonderful executive director, Jessica Wilson, and especially to thank Jane Calvin, who, without incredible amount of hard work, this would not have been possible. And again, I thank them all and the city council for recognizing Rowley Perrin. I'm really happy and honored to be part of this process. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. So Rowley, if you'd just come up to the podium, we have a key to the city and a citation for you. Again, we thank you for everything you've done for the city and for citizens to make everybody happy, your farm, your trees, and everything. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just did this all for the neighborhood, and it's been a pleasure to keep this as open space as opposed to, you know, getting it all built up and developed. So I did it for the neighborhood as well as myself and my friends. Thank you.
Okay, so next, we're going to city clerk portion. We'll accept the minutes of the city council meeting, November 23rd, and the environmental and the Environmental Flood Issue Subcommittee on November 30th. So, need a motion to accept by Council Merce, a second by Council Samaris. So, being 7:00, we'll get into the general public hearings. First loan order by MSBA ARP feasibility study of various schools. Open up the hearing to any, to all those in favor. In favor? Anyone in favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. Opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to Adolphen to refer to the clerk's office for 20 days by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Elliott. Roll call?
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Council Merce?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Utility public hearing. Boston Gas requests installation, replacement of existing cast iron gas main with six-inch plastic pipe main on River Cliff Road from Jenna Lane to Andover Street. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. In favor? Anybody there? Anyone else in favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition. Opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Conway. Roll call? Oh, no roll. 5-2. Boston Gas requests installation of two four-inch low-pressure gas mains along Nicole Drive, Stewart Street, Montview Ave, Monadnock Ave, Pine Street, Alyssa Drive, and Reina Street. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition. Opposition? That portion is closed. New motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Samaris, seconded by Council Rourke. Next communications. Any questions on motion response A, snow plowing plans? Councilor Chow? Any questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Madam Manager and Christine Clancy for the report. I know there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of issues to deal with, from equipment to managing the operations. It might be, you know, this kind of meeting probably deserve a different session just to discuss it altogether. I just have a, just one quick thing that might not be addressed in here. I think just one of the small things or big things to many neighborhoods with small streets. When the snow plow, they usually get piled at the corner, at the intersecting corner of streets, and usually that really cause traffic issue, safety issue, but also it block some walkways to the house and things like that. And, you know, you don't have to address it tonight, of course, it's a big issue, but in concerning pulling the plan together for the winter plowing, if your team could put that into action in terms of taking care of the snow piling on street corners and such things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Just one comment, if you don't mind. Matt, through you, Madam Manager, Christine Clancy, or who's ever listening. Just, yeah, if we could, to Council Chow's point, if we can just make sure that before these, the contractors go out, that they learn their routes. And, yeah, there are some corners you can pile snow on. There's other corners you can't because of the sidewalks and things. So, if we can just be clear on that this year, that would be a big help. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Clancy is here, so, that's a good point. Thank you.
All right. Any questions on the next response? Pataque Boulevard crosswalk, Council Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for reporting. I think the main concern, specifically for those that do, potentially that do walk, is right at the end of the Rourke Bridge, crossing over to where the Bonaure Market Basket is. Understanding that, you know, you will have to put handicap access there, but on either side of the traffic lights, you have to walk a pretty far distance down on each side. And I know that there are designs for a new Rourke Bridge. That's all great and so forth. But the time being, you know, the motion came from, you know, residents that do walk a lot. Now, the Market Basket over there, obviously preferring to go to the Pataque one than the Wood Street one, right? So, you know, if a crosswalk could put in there, and again, I know the light would have to be put in as well, but that is the main thought behind the motion, is right with the light, the cars get off to put a walkway there. Thank you. A crosswalk, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. And I know the commissioner did send it to Mast dot and asked for their input as well. So, we'll follow up with them, you know, because even though there's a new Rourke Bridge being designed, it will be a while, I'm sure, before that's a reality. And even if that can be done, once they settle where the, where the bridge is going to be, if it's the preferred location aligning with Old Ferry Road, can they do the crosswalk? On the front end, not the last part.
Sure. And I'm not being an engineer or expert. Again, it just looks like just two handicap cuts on the sidewalk to get up to, and the curb to get to the sidewalk and just a crosswalk, right? Thank you.
We'll follow up with Mast dot.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Any questions on the construction update? Just, Council Samaris?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for this report. It really is a very complete report, and I think it addresses a lot of issues with a lot of people because quite often, we're often asked, "When will it be done?" The only concern I have is the Central Street Bridge. And the thing is, it really does affect the businesses on Central Street. And it talked about, you know, a 10-month lead time for procurement of-- This is something that's totally out of our control. Is that like a hopeful answer, or is that an expected, like contract, that it'll come in 10 months? Do you understand? Are we hoping it's within 10 months?
Yeah. Commissioner Clancy, I know, has been working on this. Though, that is the lead time Mast dot has put out to their suppliers. Commissioner Clancy, if you can address that.
Sure. Good evening. So, that is the answer, is that it's 10 months. We procured that this summer, and I know we were looking at lead times earlier in the summer, too, in the spring, and we were hearing 10 months, and it didn't really seem that real, just because it's such a long time. And then, really, to be able to, I guess, define a timeline, we had to place an order. So, we placed an order, and even as of this week, we're still looking at May. We're asking for more updates, and as of now, it's still end of May, maybe even the first week in June. So, we're still, unfortunately, looking at 10 months, and that's just the way the industry is right now.
I'm sure this is a nightmare for you, I mean, because, especially when you come to a point where you have no control of the situation. But the other issue is bridges, it seems, take a long time. You know, we'll go by for months and see no action on a bridge or what have you, but is there any way of prioritizing that particular bridge in any way other, you know, with the state? I know you've tried, but I'm just saying, is there something else that we could possibly do?
We did look at potentially a temporary bridge, but this, the cost of that, I think we didn't even come up with a true cost, but I mean, that's substantial, hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of dollars. And so, we, I guess, the, right now, it's, this is the answer. This is the, we need to procure the steel. Any other solution would require steel. We did talk about temporary, but it's just, given the condition of the bridge, we can't do anything until we obtain that steel. There will be some work that we can do ahead of the May, the delivery of the steel. So, people will see that construction is beginning in probably March, maybe, or April. Some utility work and some demo. So, there will be some active construction ahead of that 10 months. But really, that's the 10 months when the steel comes, that's when we really start to do the construction and move forward with that bridge. This is the last bridge of the Tiger project, so that's the thing, is there's no other bridge we can jump to right now as part-- This is, this is the end of the project. It's just this bridge. I guess one, if I can just highlight that, I guess, the silver lining is that we will be receiving a bridge that is rated now for essentially 30, 50 years. With the repair that we were doing, we were going to be back there in another 10, 15 years, which, which isn't that far away. So, that is the silver lining in this, in this, you know, added expenditure.
No, thank you. Obviously, a lot was done in this, you know, to, to be in this particular position. So, I thank you for that. It's just that, you know, you look and you hope, but thank you for all the work that's been done. No question.
Sure. Council Merce?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate those that put this report together. Christine McCall and Christine Clancy, great job detailing every aspect of everything that's going on in the city. I'm just concerned about Andover Street and the, that's probably Estate Road 133 Mast dot, and I know we have a contractor that's doing that. I just want to interject, and as I have before, of the importance that six to eight trees came down, and if we could make note to the state that would like them replaced. I know Jane Calvin is not here. I wish she still was, because she's an advocate for replacing trees, and so, that's all the concern that I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that, that is part of their contract, that they have to do that, and it's really critical because it looks pretty barren right now, the way, you know, that project is. And it's, it's in hiatus because it's going to continue into 2022.
Yes.
But we will absolutely make sure about that. And just quickly, Mr. Mayor, on the Central Street Bridge, I just did want to, I mean, the point may, well-made, that this is inconvenient for the businesses and the residents. We do understand that. We did explore, could we open it back up two ways? But we cannot, we would risk at that point, given the condition of the bridge, maybe having to close both ways, which would be really disastrous. So, unfortunately, that's where we're at. If for some reason, the supply chain was going to open up and we could get it sooner tomorrow, you know, that would be great, but that's not what we're hearing so far. So, it really is when the steel can be delivered.
Thank you. Council Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christine, quick question. So, the sidewalk improvement projects, there's a list of maybe 10 to 15 of them here. Do you expect those all to be started and completed in 2022?
So, the list of streets is the, is really the roadway project? So, this will all begin in the spring? Yes, this project will begin in the spring. And also, this is, I guess, the project that we just awarded. We also have the current project that's going on that will complete Plain Street and Middlesex Street. So, that will all begin in the spring. I, this might take us, I don't know if all of this will be completed next year. I can follow up. This might be 18-month schedule, but a lot of this will be underway, spring, summer, and into the fall, really, until we, you know, to the end of the fall season. And then, the miscellaneous sidewalk replacement project, that's a separate project that we're going to be putting out to bid this winter. Again, construction for that will happen in the, start in the spring.
Is there a, I know there's an alphabetical order here, but is there an order of which they'll get done?
That hasn't been provided. So, we just awarded the contract, so we have to have a kickoff meeting with the contractor to go over what, where they want to start, but also where do we want to start? So, we will just start that process, and so, we're ready to go for the spring and have a plan. So, I think maybe for the next update, we could probably have more of a schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Council Elliott?
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor, through Christine. Last night at the South Lowell Neighborhood meeting, there are a number of requests for potholes to be filled, kind of large potholes. Is, are there still some asphalt plants open, or are we doing coal patch? I mean, are we, are we filling potholes before the winter?
Yeah, we're still filling potholes as far, I know at some point, plants do switch over to more of a coal mix, but there's, Brock still does have a winter mix. Sometimes, we can't get it every, every day or every weekend or night, but we still do that through the winter.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I was bringing that information back. I know Shawna was, was there as well. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? I just have one quick question from the chair. The VFW Highway, that looks pretty close, but they're going to still need till the spring to finish that up?
Yeah, I think it's more temperature-sensitive. So, in the report, it was they have a median to complete final top course paving, traffic markings, and just other some punch lists. So, that will be completed in the spring.
If the weather, the weather's supposed to be pretty good in December, is there any way they're going to speed that up?
The, I mean, I can follow up with Mast DOT, but the plan is to, I think that, I think they're planning on doing some of this in the spring. I can ask the question.
Yeah, can we see if we can push that for, we're supposed, after this week, we're supposed to have a month of pretty unusual warm weather, so it'd be nice if we could speed that up.
I, I will ask. It's just the latest update, and this update was from last week, that they were planning on doing it in the spring. So, I don't know if that contractor had any other commitments, or, but I can ask.
Yeah, just block the road. Don't let them leave. All right. Thank you. Any questions on the four-way stop at Hoyt and Waverly? Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's getting to the point where I can almost recite this particular type of motion response by heart related to four-way stop signs, and I understand it. I do get it. I think the conventional wisdom in a lot of these circumstances is that the additional stop sign is something that will, will help with some of these problematic intersections. And, you know, I don't always, you know, bring the intersection ones forward, but for these circumstances where, you know, a number of residents are concerned and where there's a substantial amount of both speeding and cut-through traffic. So, I understand a stop sign may not be the resolution to the problems that exist there, and the response does mention that these particular intersections are being, you know, compiled and tracked, particularly if we want to get a traffic engineer to figure out some sort of additional traffic calming measure that, that might help, because, you know, this is one where the residents are particularly concerned, particularly feel like the cut-through traffic just does not respect the neighborhood when they do use it for that purpose. So, just want to chime in to state that I, that I do hope, you know, particularly once we do have the engineer, that we can revisit some of these intersections and make sure that if not a stop sign, that there is some sort of traffic calming to help mitigate the impacts on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on motion response E, Cambridge and Chelmsford Streets? Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, for, for the report. Chelmsford Street, that's a very busy street, and the motion is requesting to install a traffic light there. And I, there's this temple, and people travel from the train station, it's a cut-through from Dunn Street as well. Hill Street, Cambridge Street is becoming very, very busy. And I feel like when I drive, and many residents have told me, when they come out of Cambridge Street to get onto, what, left turn or right turn, onto Chelmsford Street, they have to really gun it because the traffic on Chelmsford Street is pretty fast. I understand that the traffic study, just to do traffic studies, 10 to 20,000, but the project itself is costing 200,000. And a 10 to 20,000 traffic study costs the same, whether you have an in-house engineer or not. I'm just wondering, Madam Manager, if we, just for now, if we could do, if we have the funds for it, can we do a traffic study? And hopefully, in the future, near future, there'll be some funding for capital budget to install traffic light eventually. I know it does take some time, but at least we would know or not that we need traffic lights there or not in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Yeah, we would have to look at this as a future capital project, Councilor, and so, we will look into that, in that area. I know exactly what you're talking about because it's a very hard street to come out onto, so. But it wouldn't, it's not in the capital plan right now, but we will, we'll take a look at that as we move forward.
Thank you. Any questions on motion response F, Director of Homelessness? Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, for the report.
Thank you, Madam Manager, for the report, and also for recognizing the importance of this position. You know, we need to have a coordinator coordinating this, coordinating council on the homelessness and housing. I know that the past couple weeks, a police department, particularly Captain Kilman, have addressed a lot of issues in the South Lowell, and has trickled down to the Lower Island. Last week, Joe Hunger talked about, you know, they went behind his establishment and, you know, making parents wondering, worried and afraid. So, you know, Captain Kilman addressed that immediately because they went wandering into locations that they shouldn't be. So it's a bigger problem, Madam Managers, and I'm glad that the state now recognizes that this is not just Lowell or regional, it's a statewide issue, and that we need to find solutions to this. So I, I happy to see in your report that you actually starting to interview finalists. How many, how many potential candidate for interview right now, Madam Manager?
I know we had several applications. Christine McCall is here. She could address the, the interviews did start this week, Counselor, and...
Thank you. We had one interview today, and we have a few others scheduled this weekend, early next. And so we're interviewing five candidates right now. We did get about 10 to 15 applicants. And so we will go through the first round, and then we'll assess with the manager about next steps, and we'll keep the council apprised.
Yeah, there were a fair number of applicants for this position, so, which is good.
Madam Manager, what, if any input that the, the member of the Council on Homelessness and Housing, you know, take part in this interview or recommendation?
Thank you, Counselor. So it's a, at this point, we are just doing, city staff are part of the interview panel. We have not discussed how we want to include the coordinating council, other than we know what the priorities of the coordinating council are, and we're very mindful that each organization at the table has a different strength and a different priority. So we are really looking for someone who can bridge the gaps and work with everybody. We feel confident that our interview team can find the right candidate.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you, Christine, to Madam Manager.
You all set, Counselor Noon? You're all set? Are you all set?
I am the all set.
Okay. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, Madam Manager, would it be possible for this council and the public to meet the two new department heads recently put on board? Peter Crew and Theodorus Panagiotopoulos?
Yeah, we were planning to bring them to next week's city council meeting. They did start yesterday. We just thought we'd give them a day or two to get their feet under them. But we will bring them to the council next, next week.
That's fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions on temporary cottage housing? Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager, for the, the response and the great letter that was transmitted to Secretary Sutter's at, at the state level. And certainly hope you'll keep the council apprised if there is any response or interaction with the administration on that issue. Did just have a, a question, and I realize that it's only been two weeks since the, the motion was filed. But has there been any thought given to whether there are any potential locations, whether here in the city or in surrounding communities that might be able to accommodate cottage housing communities similar to what's been proposed at the Shannick Hospital in, in Boston? I know my sort of offhand suggestion was met with some resistance from elected officials in Tewksbury when I had mentioned potentially utilizing the, the grounds of Tewksbury State Hospital. And, and it was just that, you know, it was a suggestion, and, and a community like this, it is difficult to find the open space, particularly open public space, that, that could accommodate it. But I think the fact of the matter is, we do need to rely on surrounding communities, not just because we're, we're small, but because this is a regional problem. Certainly, we do rely on, on Chelmsford for the hotel, non-congregate shelter. So did just throw it out there as a suggestion, but just was curious whether there has been any initial thought given to, if there are potential locations that could be utilized.
Madam Manager?
We, we've had discussions, Counselor, around that issue, whether there is open land. I mean, unfortunately, the city doesn't have open land, city-owned land that could be suitable for construction of these kind of cottage-like structures. You know, so we are looking to the state to come to the table because the state has resources and assets that they control, and, and perhaps working together, whether it's in the city or whether it's outside the city. So we'll, you know, follow up with Secretary Sutter's as well to see if we can get that conversation going. But, but we did go through, and I know Planning and Development looked at the list of assets that the city has, and we really don't have that type of land available. I mean, we have public parks, but we wouldn't be able to use those for housing. So, but other than that, you know, we, we don't. But we are certainly going to pursue this. And, and I know, you know, we've had meetings with CTI and some of their projects and endeavors, and are working collaboratively with CTI over some of the projects that they're trying to get going for permanent housing for single or individual homeless individuals. So, so it is something that we're talking about on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're probably beating a, a dead horse here, but given the magnitude of mental health services that are needed and necessary, and not just for the homeless folks, but just generally, has there been any discussion that you know, Madam Manager, at the state level to reopening some of these facilities, like Solomon Mental Health in this area? I mean, at the state level, they, they've got to know the need for these services, both for homeless and as, as well as just generally throughout, throughout the Commonwealth and the nation. I think it makes sense that, I know we've approached this issue in the past. They have to be aware of it. And are there any plans for, for, for providing some outpatient? We have the facility here. Just seems like it makes sense that the state government has got every tool, whatever the process is, and provide services.
We did have conversations earlier on in the pandemic with Secretary Sutter's about Solomon Mental Health Center. It appears there's some lease, that, that the state has leased the property, at least part of the property, to some group. And so it wasn't, you know, that, the, in the group that it was leased to may have been providing some mental health services, but then I think they may have moved on. So it's unclear what the status is as far as availability. But we'll, you know, that's the whole point, I think, of trying to talk to the secretary and see is there any ability, especially because, you know, even in terms of mental health services, what we're hearing from, you know, the advocates and the people who are working with the homeless community is even if someone is sent for mental health services or sectioned, for instance, they are kept very short time in their back out on the street because of just what, you know, what, what's happening. And so to get someone long-term services is almost impossible, you know? So is there a way for the state to provide some of those facilities where some individuals who need more long-term mental health services could go? And, and those are conversations that, it's not just Lowell, but we just happen to have Solomon Mental Health, you know, or what was known as Solomon here, so.
Right. Look, the, the policy that's in place or the procedural regulations is a failure, not only for the people that need the services, but also the, the stress that it puts on other services, the police officers, the emergency rooms, the ambulance, I mean, you know, the whole list. So it's a temporary fix. They kick the can, they're back out in the street, not getting the services they need. So it's unfortunate because we know it here at the level, the advocates know it, and it, it's a state issue, and it needs to be addressed at the state level. So like you say, we keep talking, and that's the conversation I think should be the focus with the secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another factor that enters into this homelessness slash mental health situation, where people are free to be on the street and do many things that are against the law, they're not getting caught. But what bothers me also is the fact that we have businesses in this city, and if they congregate in front of a particular business, like they have on Charles Street, and they're defecating, and they're causing commotion, and they're causing trouble to the point where the people that have been there for years and years want to leave this city, they're not only ruining our city with, you know, making a mess and trash and all this, but they're letting our businesses leave the city that have been here a long time. And it isn't just one, it's quite a few, and I could name them all. So that bothers me the most. We actually, I know, and I commend Counselor Drinkwater because at least he's trying and he's thinking. Those little, beautiful little houses, they're good, but then you've got to think of the long, long term. Do we have to wire them up? Do we have to put in gas pipes? Do we have to heat them? Do we have to provide water? Do we have, where are we going to do this? But I knew where we chose Tewksbury, I knew that they wouldn't be happy about that. Just as, I'm not happy that different surrounding communities are dropping their homeless people off on the borderline of Lowell because we have the services to provide to them. It's like a no-win situation. Everybody's trying, I know you are, Madam Manager. It's like the state should be helping us, and the surrounding communities that receive different monies, for whatever reason, provide services, that are not providing the services should come to us because they're the ones that are putting their people here. It, it's just a sad situation. It's like scratching your head and wondering, what can we do next? So, I mean, I welcome everybody that's thinking about it, but I believe we need a building to put all these people in, the homeless people that can't function on their own, that need to be supervised with the medication, that they would probably be great people if someone could monitor them and give them the medication that they need. Who knows? They could even get a job. I see this happen every day with the co-op team, and I, I don't want to be the cheerleader again, but they do remarkable work. They save lives. I see it. But, but I'm also thinking about other things that are happening in this city with the homeless, and it's, it's very, very troubling. And I, I want to just say this, I know it's going to sound cruel, but when I was a little girl, I remember that they had a place on Chelmsford Street. You wouldn't probably remember that, Madam Manager. It was called the Poor House, and they had it on Chelmsford Street. People that were indigent went in that poor house, and they get saved, and they get helped and things. And it's almost like, like bell bottoms, they come back full circle again, and, and maybe we need a house like this. I wouldn't call it the Poor House, but I'd call it another name to help people so that they're not on the street being exposed to violence and, you know, torture and preyed upon and out in the cold. I see them sleeping on the street. I see how, I don't know how they live. We save lives. We go out with a knock hand, and they're on drugs. They probably don't even know what they're doing. But we need to not forget the people, and I think we're trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motions? Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Chow? Votes of the city manager?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Before we go into the votes of the city manager, Madam Manager, please don't be upset, but we have a person here on the Wire Inspector Report's 10.2. I'm sure he would like to leave, but maybe there's some on Zoom. Are there any people on Zoom? If we could just go to this gentleman, he's at 10.2, number four, Verizon, New England, request installation. If we could just, I mean, he's not complaining, but I just, we have a tendency to put people asleep. I thought maybe he might be one of them. I don't know.
Motion to, to go off the agenda?
Suspend the rules to allow 10.2, the fourth one, Verizon, New England.
Motion by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Chow. Wire Inspector Reports, 10.2, you were saying, right?
Yes.
All together, Joe. We just accept them.
Yeah, you could do them all if you want.
So was he here to speak on it, you're saying?
You going to speak on it?
There's, there's really, it's already had public hearings. We're just accepting the report from a wire inspector.
Okay. If we could probably bundle them, this, four of them.
All right. So we have, first one is Boston Gas DBA National Grid Request Installation of 400 Feet of New 2-Inch Plastic Along Bassett Street. Boston Gas Request Installation and Replacement Gas Main on Woodward, Oxford, Wright, Starboard, Cortland, Waterford, West Fifth, West Adams. Three, Boston, Boston Gas Request Installation and Replacement Gas Main, Walker, Lynch Elder, Litchfield, Redding, and Hampton. And four, Verizon, New England Request Installation of Four Underground Conduits Along 657 Middlesex Street. So need a motion to adopt the accompanying orders by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Smaas. No roll call, right? All those in favor say aye? All right. Thank you. All right. Now we're into the votes. Votes of the city manager. 7-1 vote to transfer funds from the Greater Lowell Technical High School Assessment to DPW School Improvements. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, City Lowell, in-city council vote, transfer the funds from the appropriation of the city's assessment for the Greater Lowell Technical High School into the DPW School Improvements account, more fully described in cash management. Any questions on this? Sure. Counsel Elliot?
It's a good report. I was just curious what projects, I don't think they're outlined in here.
Yeah, the, the, these are projects, I know Commissioner Clancy is here. We had discussions with the school department about possibly using ESER funds for this back in the spring.
Right.
And, and so that's still a work in progress.
So this money's going to go towards those projects?
This is going to go towards some of those projects. And these, these are priorities. They're time-sensitive, and that's why we are, since this money is available?
Thank you to the Greater Lowell Vogue for $300,000.
Yeah, thank you, Greater Lowell, you know, because that's good news, that, that the assessment is, is less. And, and I know Commissioner Clancy was concerned because the ESER process and the approval process has been slow, or slower than the projects need, and the projects are very time-sensitive. So the, this money will assist in getting those projects done. Most of them heating projects, I believe.
Thank you.
Roll, motion? Motion by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Roll call?
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
7-2 vote supplemental appropriation Lowell Fire Department overtime. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, in-city council vote supplemental appropriation to raise from the tax levy local receipts and offset receipts appropriated to Lowell Fire Department account for personal services in the FY 2022. Any questions? Motion by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counselor Chow. Roll call?
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
7-3 vote to accept and accept.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
7-3, vote to accept and expend grant from the Mass DEP to the DPW. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, City Lowell, in City Council, vote, authorizing the City Manager to accept and expend funds from Recycling Dividends Program Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection through the Sustainability Materials Recovery Program for the use of City Lowell Recycling Program administered through the Department of Public Works. Any questions? Motion by Counsel Conway, seconded by Counsel Chow, roll call.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Emile Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
7-4, vote to accept and expend grant from the EOA to the Council on Aging. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, City Lowell, in City Council, vote, authorizing the City Manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to apply and accept and expend grant funds in the sum of $28,200 from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs through the age span formerly known as Elder Services of the Merrimack Valley through their nutrition program to be administered by the City of Lowell Council on Aging. Motion by Counsel Mercy, a seconded by Counsel Rourke, roll call.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Emile Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
7-4, vote to accept and expend grant from the EOA to the Council on Aging. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, City Lowell, in City Council, order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 266-6, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations Traffic, Temporary Traffic Regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. Motion to adopt by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Samaras.
I missed Mr. Mayor. Quick question. So, Madam Manager, thank you very much, I know this has been a problem over there for a while, over on Pataca Street. Just curiosity, how would those that park there all the time, would they be notified with a tag on the car just saying, next time you do it, it's a, it's a fine, or, because there are, even last night driving by, I counted almost 20 vehicles, and as soon as you take that right from school.
Yeah, they've started parking on, on the bridge. Usually the sign, we'll put up signs. Christine McCall?
Yeah, so DPD does a review of whether or not it warrants a 60-day trial, obviously the council votes on it, and then we coordinate with the sign shop, which is in the police department. So in this particular case, we'll ask that they coordinate, obviously, with an officer on duty, and they probably can notify cars, issue warnings as they install the signs. Other than, I guess they could come back to a ticket, but we won't do that on the first day, or we'll ask that they don't do that.
Yeah, but we'll, 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 we'll try and have, you know, just an effort from patrol to, to notify and put post signs.
Yeah, it's definitely a problem, the cars that are parked there, but at the same time, they're doing it now for, as the bridge open, and
Yeah.
Sure don't want to wake up with a $50 ticket of the car.
Right.
Communication, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So.
Roll call. Yeah, roll call.
Roll call.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Emile Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
All right. Ordinances from City Manager, 9-1, ordinance to amend Section 9 floodplain overlay. Motion to refer to the public hearing on December 21st of 2021 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Chow. Report, any subcommittee reports? Environmental flood issues, November 30th. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Tuesday, the Environmental and Flood Issues Subcommittee met. In attendance was myself, Counsel Elliot, Counsel Noon. Also in attendance was Emily Burns from Congresswoman Trahan's office, and Cara Keefe and Elliot Veloso from the City Manager's office. This was a motion by Counsel Elliot to provide more information on FEMA, and Ms. Burns had members of FEMA on a video to explain the changes that have been made. To say it was a good meeting is an understatement. I, I would encourage people who live in the floodplains to make sure that they watch that Subcommittee meeting if they can. But as a result of the Subcommittee meeting and the type of information we received, there was a motion that came out to ask that the group from FEMA be, make a presentation to the Patacaville Neighborhoods Association, so people from Patacaville and all over the city that live in either a floodplain or those areas that can be damaged by severe rainstorms, and, you know, we're in that particular point. But the thing is, let me just touch upon some of the points that they were raising. There's an Equity Action Plan that's come out, it's 2.0, and it talks about individuals who no longer pay more than their share in flood insurance premiums based on the value of their homes. Homes with lower replacement cost value will pay less premiums than homes with higher replacement costs. Then it talked about roughly two-thirds of policyholders with older pre-forem homes will see a premium decrease. And it talked, elevation and distance from water was a big subject for discussion at that particular point. What they talked about, this Equity in Action Plan, that premiums will be more, will more accurately reflect a property's unique flood risks by considering a broader range of variables. So what they were talking about is if you talk about basic flood elevation, they talk about elevation in a different sense. I, I could give an example in the sense of, you could be homes on the same street, but if at the end of the street, your elevation is, we'll say, maybe 10 to 15 feet higher than your, your neighbors, you're going to pay less of a premium because of that. In other words, it's just not an open map where you're in the floodplain and that's it. So this, the federal government is taking, is looking at other issues. It's also talking about distance to the coast, oceans, and river, rivers. That's another issue. The one thing about them, it was, this can be a very complex situation, but the thing is, they made it simple, or they made it where people can understand. But that's again why I'm recommending that we have this group from FEMA come before the Patacaville Association, so people can ask their individual questions, as to, you know, and get a lot of, we'll say, good information on what's going on with their flood insurance program, and how they can either benefit from it, or what steps that they have to take. It talked about, the cities must agree with the flood plan, so it talked about a good working relationship with the cities, and that these flood maps are not just something that comes out of Washington, but it's an agreement made with the city and those people who are responsible for those issues. And, and what's, what was, I thought, important, and say it again, equity in action premiums will mean accurately reflecting a property's unique flood risks by considering a broader range of variables, which I just stated. And again, it's distance from the water, it's elevation, and those type of things. People should know that what happened when you had older homes that were there before FEMA became part of a requirement and the insurance from FEMA was made available, that these homes were given much, were paid much less in premiums because they were already there, they couldn't meet some of the new federal needs. But the program lost a lot of money, so this is why this action plan has come in, to make it fair for everybody. So the thing is, it's, it's a different type of, you know, concentration. The one thing that they left us with is that most communities, he talked about, I guess there was over 900 insurance policies with FEMA, but it's all about 1,000 when you talk about private insurance, because some people just do not go through FEMA but go through a private agency. And he suggested that many communities have some of the insurance companies, and they have a stronger, very strong working relationship with the city and with the, with the neighborhoods, and that we should be considering that. He was asked, they were asked if they had any recommendations, and they said, that's not their responsibility, that would be something that a community would do. But we just found it, I think, very worthwhile, and again, I want to thank Emily Burns from Congresswoman Trahan's office, because they provided us with good information, and we can continue with that. I believe we, the council as a whole asked to vote to allow the, to request FEMA to come in, speak to the neighborhood, Patacaville Neighborhood Association. So make that motion and...
Sure. You want to speak, or you accept, make second in the motion? Counsel Elliot?
Yeah. Sure. Second on the motion.
Okay. Get the motion.
No.
Could you state the motion one more time, Paul?
Okay, a request that the group from FEMA that was presented to us by Congresswoman Trahan's office to be invited to speak at the Patacaville Neighborhood Association. And, but to advertise that throughout the city.
Okay. All right. Sure, Madam Manager.
Thank you. We, we, we had some preliminary conversations, we're not positive that they would come to a, a, a meeting, so, but we could certainly put the ask in, I just don't want to...
They, they did state that they would do that.
Okay. Did they? So we'll, we'll follow up with Congresswoman Trahan's office.
They could have said, I mean, not knowing what they would get themselves into.
Yeah, so, so we'll, I, I, we'll, we'll follow up with Congresswoman Trahan's office and try and coordinate that. But we, we certainly would encourage people because you can access the Subcommittee online to watch it. As, as you said, there's a lot of good information in it, so, but we'll follow up with, with the Congresswoman's office.
Thank you, thank you.
Counsel Elliot, did you have anything to add?
I did, just a little bit. I mean, it was a good report, but as Counsel Samaras mentioned, it's, it's complicated. But for the average, for the homeowner, for the 922 people that are affected by this new rating system, and the new rating system is to, to replace the old system, where if you're at a certain elevation, you're getting this, this premium, and that's, that's it. And by the way, the average cost of the premium, as we heard from FEMA officials, was about $4,000 per household on top of your homeowner's insurance. So that's why I thought it was important to get this, have this meeting, get the information from FEMA in layman's, layman's terms to get out to the people that will be affected by it. Insurance policies should pass the savings on. 23% of the homeowners will see an immediate, around $86 per month reduction. Another 66% will see between 10 and 15. So that, that does add up. So it's, it's good that the federal government is finally changing the rating system, it'll benefit the homeowners, and the timing of this was because this new, this new insurance rating system takes place October 1st, as Counsel Samaras mentioned, for the older homes. As Phase 2 is October 1st, 2022, that's when, and policy owners should see an immediate adjustment. So if anyone watching, and we get this, this information out, they should see an adjustment. Again, this is through the National Insurance Flood Program that subsidizes this, so it was a good meeting, and I know that the information material is a little complicated, but I thought they presented it in an understandable way that we can get that information out. And I think the follow-up too, if FEMA could not come, if they wouldn't make a commitment to come to the neighborhood meeting, this wasn't unfortunately, it wasn't broadcast live, but if LTC could get the link to the city, and we could get, get it to the neighborhood organization, I can either play parts of it during the meeting, or play it on the Facebook page or something, so. That was, I think that was a commitment of Emily and Cara, did a great job getting these folks there, and there were some handouts that was very good, but the bottom line is, this is to save people money on their flood insurance that have been paying it for years and years, and in some cases, it'll be significant, so. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Need a motion, or, motion to accept as a report of progress by Counsel Smas, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Next petitions, 11-1, claims for property damage, and motion to refer a law department for a report and recommendation by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Chow. 11-2, Boston Gas DBA National Grid, request installation of new low-pressure gas main on Gold Street to the end of School Street. First reading, motion to refer to the public hearing on December 21st at 7:00 PM by Counsel Drinkwater, seconded by Counsel Conway. 11-3, Boston Gas DBA National Grid, request installation of new plastic gas main at 43 Danclis Road, refer, motion to refer to public hearing on December 21st at 7:00 PM by Counsel Mercy, a seconded by Counsel Elliot. 11-4, Comcast requests installation of PVC conduit on existing pole at Howe and Davidson Street. Prefer to, motion to refer to public hearing on December 21st at 7:00 PM by Counsel Chow, seconded by Counsel Conway. Motions? First motion tonight by Counsel Elliot, request City Council to discuss and implement traffic calming measures on Woodward Ave, Brookside Road, and Columbia Road to address the cut-through traffic. Seconded by Counsel Drinkwater, Counsel Elliot?
Motion speaks for itself. Mr. Mayor, I, I know we still don't have a transportation engineer, is that, is that correct, or are we making any progress on it? No, we don't, not yet. But as a result of a sinkhole that took place on a corner, right at that intersection, I've got a number of calls from residents that certainly it has exacerbated the traffic, and it made it even more dangerous, and sort of highlighted the need for some traffic calming and mitigation, so that's the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motions, say aye. 12-2, Counsel Elliot, request City Manager to provide a report on the proposed amendment to housing development plan as it relates to the Commonwealth HDIP, Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B. Seconded by Counsel Mercy, Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually saw a public notice, Madam Manager, in the, in the newspaper, it was a week and a half ago, and I wasn't, I wasn't aware of exactly what the amendment was, or, so that's just, I'd like to put in a request, you know, for a report and find exactly what it is for myself and of my colleagues here, so. I don't know if she has an explanation, but I'm willing to...
We'll, we'll get a report. Christine McCall can...
That was on me, the report was supposed to be on the council tonight, that was on me. But we will have a report next week. We just want to amend the local incentive because the state has changed the tax credit program at the state level, so it's much less attractive for developers, and as you all know, and as we've discussed over the summer, I believe Counsel Elliot and Counsel Noon had multiple motions about developing downtown buildings, so we are hoping that this will be an added incentive for developers to take on more challenging projects, because there'll be a more generous local option, because not all projects will be funded through the state tax credit program, they're going to take one from each gateway city, and it's for market rate housing. The public hearing that's noticed, we have to do that as part of amendment of the plan, but we planned to present it to you on the 14th, we'll have the results of the public hearing that's also on the 14th, and then if the council wants to refer it to a Subcommittee, we can continue to do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye. 12-3, Counsel Conway, request City Manager to provide an update regarding the citywide campaign that will address vehicle traffic and pedestrian safety on the streets of our neighborhoods. Seconded by Counsel Elliot, Counsel Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back a few weeks ago, I put this, I put a motion on, and the reason why I put this particular type, this motion on, was the fact that, as I mentioned, that there were so many different counselors that put...
I mentioned, that there were so many different counselors that put motions on in regards to traffic and to, and talking about pedestrian safety. And we discussed this week after week about the speeding in different, on different streets and how individuals go through stop signs and so forth. And I think it's extremely frustrating for people in the neighborhood and the city. And it's also very frustrating, I think, for the police too, because they're out there and they're stopping cars. And I think it's something that's not just citywide, but it's also nationally, a problem where they go into court and basically nothing happens and they're back out. And I think that's, that's a shame. And that's why I put that motion on a while ago to have actually a campaign. Because it's not the city manager and your team and the police that can solve this problem. It takes a lot more to be at that table. And that's why I called it a campaign that would include, and we talked about it before, you know, not only the first responders in your office, but I think the, needless to say, the city solicitor has to be involved. The school systems have to be, the business community, the neighborhood organizations. And you just go on and on and on to get the people at the table. But as I said, as I've said a number of times, there, there are a couple components that you need in order to complete this formula for success. And those, those people would be individuals from the DA's office and also from the courts. I think that's a judge's office. I think that's, that is paramount that we have them somehow representation at that table. So that all the stakeholders are at the table and we can find out where the ball is being dropped. And I think that at that point, hopefully there will be a solution that, that, you know, that will take place and make the streets a lot safer for the people. Because those are the calls that I got, to be honest with you. The speeding around the neighborhoods, going through the, the stop signs, people afraid to let their kids out, you know, mothers when they were pushing the, the carriages. I know that there's been certainly concerns with cars speeding around the corners and so forth. So again, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I think, I think it's extremely important. And I, and I, I said a few weeks ago, and I'll say it again, I've been sitting here for, between school committee and city council for 12 years, and I think this is perhaps the most important motion that I put on because this can help to save lives and that's so very important. So I realize, Madam Manager, that this is not something that's going to be put together in a day or two. I'm sure it's going to take weeks and weeks to try to, to try to get these people at, at the table, because I'm sure some of them don't want to be at the table. I think we, I think we all know that. But I think it's important that if we do, we can, we can go forward and I think make some real good progress for the, for the safety of the people of, of the city. Have we reached out at all on some of this or have we had? Again, I don't want to put you on the spot, and I realize that the last time I talked, I, I realize it would take quite a while for, for this to happen.
We've had conversations, certainly with the police department and, you know, Superintendent Richardson about a strategy and trying to involve, you know, the different partners across the city. Part of it is the availability of trying to get everybody around the table. But there have been conversations on, on several occasions as to how to address this. And so it's, it's, you know, law enforcement is usually the go-to, but, you know, education in campaign is, is something else as well as some of the tools that may be available. And I know Christine McCall has talked about some of the, at least one tool we have that we may utilize. So, so we're trying to put all those pieces together.
Right. And the social media and the technology and so forth.
Correct.
Right. And I mean, again, it's, it's the campaign that, you know, if, if people, people hear this enough and there, there's, there's consequences and we, you know, I, I know, somebody told me that, I don't know if people are familiar with this, I think it's Route 40, heading through Jonesford and I think Westford and so forth. Somebody said to me, be careful on that road, you know, and I drove that road quite often. They said, be very careful on that road because the police monitor that. I was, always stayed right on that. I didn't want to go over. I never saw a policeman. But somehow it was the campaign that they developed that they didn't want speeding in those, in those towns. So I think we have to do something similar to that, that, you know, putting everything together. This is where the newspaper could help out, the radio can help out. And again, I know it's a, it's a, it's a Herculean task to, to put this, put this together. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Just one thing if I could add. We always talk about the cars parking on the sidewalks. So maybe we, you know, we just, we can work that out with the parking department too, right? Because they could write warnings and then after we warn enough times, then we can start writing tickets, especially like Lakeview Ave, you know, there's no need, the street's 60 feet wide. People just need to park off the sidewalks and on the roads. So we could add that to part of the motion. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Counsel Conway, request city manager to explore feasibility of dedicating a bench in the downtown area in memory of attorney Albert Markcott for his many years of legal service and benefactor to the citizens of Lowell and the surrounding communities, seconded by Counsel Elliot, Counsel Samaras, I mean Conway.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm very honored to put this motion on. I was blessed to be his next-door neighbor. And attorney Albert Markcott, better known as the Boss, has been involved with the legal business and having a law firm down in Merrimack Street for well over 50 years. And, and I will say that individuals that I talked with, they said that he was the type of individual that, you know, fought for the little guy and also explained, explained and brought things to a level that people could understand. And, and I've only heard great things about him. I know that my colleague here, Counsel Chow, actually worked for him, so I'm sure he could certainly add another, another portion to this equation. But I will say that I think that this has been brought to my attention that, you know, for somebody that has stayed in Lowell, has worked here, has, has given back to the community in so many different ways, and not only this community, but surrounding communities, I think it's important that we, that we actually honor someone like this. It's, it, you know, here's an individual that we'd love to have so many other citizens be in the same category. So I'll stop there, but Madam Manager, I know that this goes to the, I think it's the Monument Committee. And what I'll do is I will supply a, a more detailed report to you so that it'll have more meat to it and the information that will help them form their decision on how to, how to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Counsel Conway, for putting on this motion and very well said about Mr. Markcott, the boss. He was my boss for almost a decade. I learned so much from him and it was almost as valuable as Harvard Business School. That's what he told me anyway, and I believed that. So never set my foot on Harvard campus, but he taught me a lot. He was definitely a giant in the community. He loved Lowell. He walked the streets, downtown Lowell. He would say hello to everybody, just a good old-fashioned guy. And when I drive past the old office on the corner of Central Merrimack, I can still feel his presence on the street, saying hello to people, just greeting people, just a very, very good citizen. So I think a bench and his honor in that area, I think, or any area that you would find fit, I would totally support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, 12-5, Counsel Samaras, request city manager to review status condition of parking kiosks and ticketing of cars in the downtown area, seconded by Counsel Mercier, Counsel Samaras.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several weeks ago, I made a motion regarding kiosk, broken kiosks on Middlesex Street. And there was a lot of complaints that you had to go to two and three and possibly four kiosks to find one that worked. But the past couple of weeks, I've received a number of calls about Merrimack Street and broken kiosks, but this time it's a little different. It's, it's more about the tickets that they've been receiving. And I, I've gotten, we'll say, when you get over three calls, I mean, I think, I believe it was five calls that I've received at home, but I went to a function where there were a lot of business people, and that was part of a conversation in the downtown, broken kiosks. But the concern was that some of the people who own buildings, their clients, had problems in the sense of people running into, say, pick up a food order or whatever, and they were maybe 10 to 15 minutes and go back to their account and they got a ticket. So that would indicate to me that there's, maybe there's been some speeding up, or in other words, some were to do more ticketing. I don't know if that's the case. But it is the Christmas holidays. We've got so many businesses that have suffered through COVID. And all of a sudden, when you start getting calls and it's about the same thing, or you're in a conversation somewhere else in the city and it's about the same thing, and it's about the tickets. It's about going, parking, not being able to find a kiosk within the area that works, rushing in then saying, well, I'm only going to be down here for 10 minutes, I'm only going to be down here for 20 minutes. I'll take a chance and I'll go into the business and do what I have to do and then leave. And they come back and they've got a ticket. So whatever's happened, ticketing, I, I think the speed of ticketing has picked up. Something's going on. Because otherwise, we wouldn't get calls like this at certain times. And I'm just saying, Madam Manager, if you can look into this, it's, it's an issue. I don't know if we could develop a, I mean, it's been talked about by this council too in the past about the idea of giving a grace period for people parking in the downtown if they had, you know, in other words, can you give them a grace period of, of an hour? There's technology out there that would allow people to do that. But the question is, there is a concern. So either the kiosks have to be all replaced so they work, or we have some type of, if they're not going to be working, we have some type of grace period or some type of format or procedure where, you know, some people will not feel like, if they go down and they stop for 10 minutes and they can't find a kiosk that works, and they get it, they'll get a ticket. And they talked about the tickets being 25 or $30 now. So it's not, you know, I got a $5 ticket, I got a $10 ticket, I'll pay it. Now, it's, it's a concern with some people. So this has been brought up, as I said, recently and actively. So I just would like to see that this be, now looked into.
Thank you. Any comments on the motion? Counsel Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to the city manager, didn't we have in the holiday season, didn't we have a period of time where there was a month or so during that Christmas time that there was no, the parking was free in the, in the, in the city?
Madam Manager?
I don't know why I, I'm, that's coming, that I'm remembering that, is that?
Well, it, not, not in recent years.
Maybe not in your time.
Not in my time. But, you know, special events, yes, you know, the City of Lights Parade or things like that, but we, we haven't had that recently.
Well, I, you know, I think Counsel Samaras has a good point in that, that, you know, maybe during the holiday season, that we can make the, the parking free downtown as a possibility. I mean, I, you know, again, we're trying to get people to spend some money down there and, do you, let me ask you a question. Does, does anyone have the, does anyone have an idea of how much money we actually bring in from the street, from the street meters?
Well, yeah, we can get that information, Counsel. I mean, obviously, parking was hit very hard under COVID as well. So, you know, we, we have to continue to pay our bills and the bonds on the garages and without the revenue then, you know, it gets complicated. But yes, we, we, you know, the, Terry Ryan would be able to give us what is coming in.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking in that period of time, that might, it might be, again, if you're going to get people, as we all know, businesses, you know, a lot of their strength and their successes during that, that holiday season. And, you know, we're here obviously to try to keep them afloat and, and be successful. So it might be something to just take a look at and see if it, if it's cost-effective and perhaps it might not be. I don't know. Thank you.
We'll, we'll look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Mercier?
Just so Counsel Conway don't feel like he's the only one that remembers that, in an effort to help businesses some years ago, we did provide, in the month of December, around Christmas, we did provide free parking, absolutely.
It was a while ago. I do remember.
Well, I don't think it was that, that long.
Oh, I'm-
You were five years old, but it's all right.
You could get your ticket validated bon marché. That's the last.
That's true.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by myself, request city manager to provide a report regarding feasibility of having outside contractors for maintaining the heating and cooling machinery throughout the city buildings, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Motion speaks for itself, just to explore to see what the advantages may be for-
Yeah, we'll, we'll get your report on that. We actually did put out a contract. It was an amount of $25,000. One of the challenges though was the parts alone that were needed kind of ate up the contract price of 25,000. So in order to, we'll, we'll get a full report.
Yeah, just to compare.
But, Mr. Mayor?
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last motion tonight by myself, request city manager have DPW paint city hall bathrooms as they await full renovation, seconded by-
Second.
Counsel Elliot. Motion speaks for itself. All those in favor, say aye. Any announcements tonight? Counsel Mercier?
Thank you. Just too briefly, I'd like to wish best of luck to all the Lowell High School winter sports that, that are going to be taking place soon. And let's not forget the WCAP Salvation Army Telethon. That is this Saturday, December 11th. Please help them to reach their goal. I'll be ringing the bell in front of the Owl Diner. Please drop by and give whatever you can. Thank you.
Thank you. And then quickly, there's another blood drive tomorrow at the Masonic. If anyone's able to donate blood, wants to donate blood, you can find that blood drive online through the Red Cross. Motion to adjourn by Counsel Chow, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Thank you.[1788.41] Yeah, the countdown.